Um, call meeting to order. I'll show up for our school directors. Inaugural meeting here at CBS. Two point oh adjustments to the agenda. We've had an executive session already for negotiations. We're gonna add, I don't know if we have to delineate out, but we also need to have a brief discussion for legal. What is it for?
Elaine's up to call it legal.
And. Six, I'm wondering if we should add very brief discussion matters. Mark and I met with Heinsberg way back then when I don't think we ever decided any of what as a board we wanted to pursue, continue pursuing things to look in ways that we could collaborate with Heinsberg. So unless there's an objection, I would just put on a very brief six point two as, you know, just taking the temperature of the board about whether or not we want to pursue that. And six point three, we had the offer by Chris Flynn to do the biomass evaluation. So if we can just take a temperature, if that's something we want to explore further with administration or something. Now, I don't expect either of those being a real long discussion, but if we can just get a temperature, if we want to put down in the future.
Thank you.
Sorry, any other adjustments to the agenda?
Have you got any further information on the subject we exchanged emails about?
That will be under executive session on the meeting. Any other adjustments? All right, audience and communication. You got anything, Joe?
The ninety-nine percent has more comments.
Four point one presentations, we have no presentations this month. Five point oh reports to the board, five point one principals report. Do you want to do some highlights or?
We just wanted to share tonight, before coming here, we had a new parents' night pizza party to invite all new families to Charlotte. And we had about forty people attend this evening, and it was a really good success. Families from different backgrounds got to come and connect with each other. And our PTO came out and also shared events that we have coming up. So it was a really well-received event. Are there any specific questions you have on the principals' report for us?
Yeah, question, I'm, I'm, some of the net additions of student members' students. And the reason for withdrawals. Do you have a broken down also the reason for entries for those predominantly people who moved into the community or?
Pretty much they're people who moved into the community that are new. Whether within the state, out of state, we've had a lot of, yeah, people from out of state and with just with the neighboring towns.
Who is the PTO these days?
It's the same people who have been involved last year, so they've stayed on. It's the Mandy Koskinen, Katie Taylor are the co-presidents. And we have, our treasurer is Jenny Oster. And then our secretary is Shay Evans. So the same people who came on board last year. And they're continuing in their roles this year.
And they presented at last night's curriculum night, they presented at tonight's new families' night, so they're really
We have a meeting tomorrow morning.
Going out of their way to make themselves visible.
Yeah, they're gonna alternate their meetings, they're gonna have morning meetings for those families who can drop off students and come into meetings and then do an evening meeting the other month and offer pizza and babysitting to those families. So they're gonna do both.
Do you have a question? My one question, and it's not specifically on this, but what I was looking about is the stuff about summer school. And again, it's, I know we're working hard to get more of the students invited to be able to go. Whether or not it's scheduling or transportation. But I was wondering too, if in the back of your minds, as we're thinking about a possible shift in the calendar and if we're thinking about using those intercessions, I feel like it's, it could be the same, we could run into the same situations where kids who could use that support in the in-between periods. So I just wanted to throw that out, that I'm sure it's occurred to you as well, but something if we go forward with that to be planning, you know, how, what can we do to get the kids who would benefit
To attend?
During those two weeks or one week or whatever shakes out to be. Any questions or?
I'm just curious, and forgive me, so I didn't have the old data from last year, but have it checked out relative to what our expectations were?
Uh, what do you mean in terms of expectations? Oh, you mean enrollment?
Yeah.
I think we have a few more students than we were expecting, total. Uh, we don't have a side-by-side with last year's numbers. But I don't, I, I don't think, I think we have a few more than we expected. But we're still a few down from last year, but not as down as we thought we'd be. But I don't, I don't have last year's numbers in front of us, so.
But more or less, it doesn't show up any of our ideas of how many teachers we need to hear.
Um, we haven't done that analysis yet.
We'll do that.
We had eight second graders come in over the summer. Eight second graders, so we're at fifty-two, fifty-three second graders as opposed to, you know, where we were, forty-five.
We're down five.
Down five.
Down five.
That's about where we were.
That's what we think, A, I think.
K through eight compared to last year, opening day.
And I believe the projection was that we'd be down ten.
Because we have a larger eighth grade class, we graduated, I think, sixty-two.
Forty came in.
Right, yeah.
But then we picked up all those.
And we keep, we always tell people, you can't, you can't count on an entire grade, you know, when you're reducing staff, but meanwhile, we get eight second graders.
It's a good thing we had three classes to disperse them among, we would have been really stuck.
It's a good thing we didn't get eight fifth graders.
We did, we actually lost a few before school started and then one the first day of school.
Oh, it was even higher, oh.
It was, yeah, I had to monitor that all this summer. But in the end, we ended up at fifty-one.
All right, five point two CSSU debrief. I don't know if we need to do a debrief. I know all, we were all there for negotiations, one-on-one. Clyde or Mark, do you want to know?
No.
Okay. Moving right along, five point three, fourth quarter financial management, management report. It's pretty much the same as what we got at the retreat, right? It's just kind of confirmed. So questions or comments for favorable position, which is a good place to be? I guess moving forward, the one thing, you know, we, we talked, did we talk at the retreat about food service? And whether or not to build in to the baseline, um, a subsidy?
A contribution.
So, I mean, I don't know if that would be, yeah, if this would be the place to be talking about that, but, um, I don't know at what point that information needs to be at the SU for building a budget. Is that from this meeting or is that?
When you get to your very first, you know, and I did the cycle of the meetings, so there are some of the meetings that are connected with your regular board meetings, and then we go in through the budget cycle. The very first one would be the one, because that's maintenance facilities. That's where I would bring that in.
Okay.
I'll also make a note to.
So I guess if people can think about, and it, you know, it might depend on what the numbers look like for us, but, and I, I think the auditors have told us that have recommended budgeting instead of pulling. But by not putting it in the budget, you're allowed to do an overrun in food service. So you could sort of carry that debt and not pay it off, though.
Which we had done for a couple years, right?
Yeah, for, yeah, but for planning purposes, if you're having to subsidize every year, you know, it might make sense to actually put it in the budget.
I'm making a note to let Bob know you're having this conversation.
Looks like that'll be November nineteenth when that goes in.
Yeah, is that your first meeting?
When we decide, I shouldn't say when it goes in, when we decide. Yeah. All right, are there other?
How do we approve budget assumptions?
As if we haven't made that decision.
Budget assumptions are just there to start building the budget. You can make changes, you might remember that in the board, the budget process, Bob makes these sheets with, here are the changes that the board approved, and you have to verify that at your meeting. So there'll be a long sheet that will say, on this date, the board said, add this to the budget. On this date, the board has said, take this out of the budget. All of that has to reconcile with all your decisions. That's why the, the budget assumptions are only to help build the budget. Otherwise, how would we build a budget?
But we certainly can, we certainly can talk about it under seven point two in the budget assumptions. We can, we can decide. And I put it in or leave it out or to, to wait. Are there other questions or comments on the fourth quarter? All right, six point oh.
Excuse me, I do have a question, I was at the retreat, how did we end the year? What was our balance, what was our surplus, if any?
It's here. No, it's right here. Is it right here? It's right there with the FMR.
So thirty-six thousand would be after the transfer, correct? After the transfer to food service.
Yeah. So that's thirty-six thousand one hundred and fourteen. All right, six point one communications board corner. And it's my understanding that this might be about negotiations.
Yeah.
So what do, I, I assume maybe as our negotiator, you're gonna come up with something, and it might be in collaboration with the other?
Right, I mean, there's, as you could tell, there are things that can be said and things that can't be said. And I don't have my notes here, but at our negotiations meeting in, was it last month?
End of August.
End of August. I have, I wrote notes about, because I raised that question. I let them know that our board was interested in putting something in the paper as soon as we could. And we talked about what can be said and what can't. I don't have those notes here. And Dor, there's an expectation that you'll share that with the others and that Dale submit? Right, so that, so I'm gonna draft what will become our board corner, but it will also become something for all the towns to print, or all the boards to print once it's tweaked. Elaine, do you remember I had a deadline when I was supposed to be submitting?
Probably find out from the desk. And Brett's really quick in getting back, if he emailed him. And I'm wondering, you know, I don't know what that whole kind of, kind of, I just keep thinking how, you know, more meeting can be a, people who are very upset with what we can and can't do, I'd love to have sort of, you want us to do this, but we can only, you know, there's real limits on, on what you can, what we can do as the local board. But I don't know how you can finesse all that into an article or anything.
Can you tell, I mean, can you disclose what the ground rules are?
Not yet.
Really?
Because, because they haven't been agreed to yet.
So then we haven't agreed to the confidentiality bit?
No, none of that has been finalized. We've discussed it many different which ways, but I don't, no, we haven't agreed to them. They're in direct form, not fully. I think you can assume though that the confidentiality piece is expected because you haven't agreed yet to public meetings. So the assumption is unless you agree to public meetings, they're private meetings, and therefore it's confidential.
I think that basically if the public is interested to know, I don't think a lot of people know that they're private meetings. And what that implies in terms of their ability to understand the process.
Really? Do you think people wouldn't assume that contact negotiations were private?
I didn't know. I mean, we have all meeting laws for most everything else in the states, I just assumed. Am I, am I an old person?
I just knew that we'd go into executive session to discuss, so, but yeah.
No, but before I even joined the board, I just assumed everything around this came up in the meeting.
Most people who have
So that'd be worth saying?
Most people who have been around for at least one cycle are aware that they're closed sessions. That's distinct from saying that they think that's a good idea. But a lot of people are aware that they're closed. And I've never heard in twenty however many years, anybody say that they think closed sessions are a good idea. Or that they add any credibility to the system. As a matter of fact, most comments are to the opposite. But I think most people know that they're closed or have been in the past. Now, they'll never become open unless somebody says, let's make them open.
So that, that's been a conversation.
And you can make that request in public and make the teachers' union's response public.
I know that there's been a lot of conversation in the spring about open and closed.
And also, it's not a binary. There are a lot of different gradations within, um, different definitions and different meanings about what open and closed means or should mean. It's a good conversation.
Okay, well, we look forward to seeing it. Thank you. Uh, six point two collaboration with Heinsberg, it was so long ago.
So we, Kristen and I sat down with a member of the Heinsberg board just to sort of chat about what kind of services or whether we could collaborate on certain things. And the topics range from, you know, merging schools to doing nothing, you know, everything in between. And I guess the questions would be, how seriously do we want to look at this? This is a very preliminary meeting, it was sort of a get-to-know-it-in-a-argument type thing. Or if this isn't, if we don't think that's something to look at, then we shouldn't continue, we shouldn't continue with them and make them think that there's something for us to do. Does that sum up sort of?
Yeah, that really does sum. And I know I enquired of Elaine what the next steps could be.
And I sent, it's around tuition. So what, what could happen between Heinsberg and Charlotte in terms of students being in one school or the other? And would that involve, if kids, if Charlotte kids ended up in Heinsberg school, would that involve tuition money going? And I sent a note to Bill Talbot, and I never got back from him. I know from previous conversations with Bill that they are, they hold a hard line around moving money between any K-8 schools. So that's why, remember, we, for a year, for a couple cycles, legislative cycles, the CSSU board asked the legislature to consider providing kind of a blanket, as long as the boards agree and the superintendent signs off, that a student from Charlotte could go to Shelburne and Shelburne could get the, the per pupils. That never got past the legislature. So there's not a lot of, you know, willingness on the part of the legislature at this point to do anything with tuitioning. But he didn't respond to my email. Depending on what you're thinking, if you're thinking like a big, big plan, you could have like a joint district. Then it doesn't matter because the money would just all get mixed together and you would budget together. But I don't know that that's what you're really thinking. I, I was thinking, you were thinking more if, let's say, Heinsberg had a really very well-established science program and you had a very well-established language program, and some families wanted to be in Heinsberg to take advantage of the, of the science program and others, was there a way to move that money around?
Well, that, that was one of the proposals, could you have, especially middle schools? So one middle, one five-eight or six-eight is science and technology, one is the arts or. So right now, the only way you could do that would be to form a RED.
Or a joint district, which is a little different, I mean, than a RED. But I'm at a meeting tomorrow where I'll definitely see the secretary of education and maybe can say, hey, I'm trying to get an answer to this. Can you prompt a response?
So I guess on a more general level though, I mean, that's a big decision too, I mean, that's high and sky.
Yeah.
I do, do seem to have feelings one way or another about collaboration whatsoever.
Just remind me who initiated this meeting?
Bill did.
Actually, it was before that, it was Paul Anderson and Lynn.
Yes.
An initial meeting.
And what was their initial impetus, to talk about potentially emerging someday or something less than that?
Yeah, or both, both schools, although Heinsberg's enrollment's going up.
On the incline, but at the time, we were both schools with declining enrollments. At some point, would it make sense to be able to share teachers or be able to share resources, possibly shares students?
I also remember a piece of the conversation about resources spread K-8 and discussion about whether you can have an elementary school or a middle school.
Yeah.
Right.
So then you're, you know, you're zooming in your resources on middle level.
Well, when Brian O'Reilly was in Elaine's position, there was a lot of work done on that, checking out the feasibility of that. The towns didn't like it, so I don't know.
Well, that was all of CSSU, I was involved in that from Williston. So that would have been like a regional, an SU middle school.
Right.
That was before CBU did its big addition. That was kind of one of the things that needed to be figured out before they decided if CBU needed to do a bond out for a big addition.
Well, and I guess too, any, you know, anything that we're looking for doesn't really, I mean, it involves a lot of your time, your time. Like, I don't know what we, I don't know what our next step is. And maybe it's just finding out, you know, can you take steps short of forming a joint district or something? Because if we want to, if you can't, it's a much bigger decision than, oh, we can maybe do something shorter and.
Right, so here's an example, let's say that some year you've got five sixth graders more than you really feel comfortable having. And Heinsberg has slots for those sixth graders. Would there be a way to do those kind of creative shuffling? So that you're not in the situation where like, geez, we need to hire another teacher for five kids. I think that there are things like that, that if you could easily move kids around, if it, if the money, if you didn't lose the money. Because in the situation that we're in today, both towns lose the money. If a, if a kid from Charlotte goes to school in Heinsberg, Heinsberg doesn't get the money and Charlotte doesn't get the money.
And the kid pays tuition.
And the kid pays tuition, exactly. So is there some way to, you know, deal with the times or when, when it, there might be an overflow of kids?
Is there, and that's true, maybe I misunderstood what you said earlier. If there happened to be a kid who wanted to come the other way, we can't trade.
That I'm not, that I'm not, at the high school level, you can do that, so I'm not sure about K-8. They really treat K-8 separately from the high school. At the high school, you can do one-on-one trades and have been able to for quite some time.
Right.
It's almost a moot point now because there's universal school choice at the high school level. But even before that, you could do one-on-one trades.
Two issues with what you're talking about.
Say that again?
I think there are two issues with what you're talking about. The first is that in a K-8 school, I think it is going to require legislation to allow that money to move around. And then the second issue is, should you have an overflow of students, how are you going to select who goes to Heinsberg? Because that is going to be
Well, you couldn't do that.
If somebody moves to Charlotte for Charlotte schools and you tell them, oh, you're going to Heinsberg for fifth grade, that's not going to be workable.
No, but you might say, for instance, let's say, let's just take Williston that like borders Essex. And let's say we were in the same supervisory union, and let's say that we, Williston was facing that same situation. And you said to parents, well, you know what, we have five slots for Essex. There might be some parents that would say, hey, I am half a mile from Essex and I am ten miles to Williston. You know what I mean? So I think that it would definitely have to be the kind of thing where you say, is there anybody interested? It's an option, and I just threw that out as, what are the ways that you might be creative around, if you, if you could move money between districts?
For the record, we've collaborated with Heinsberg in the past, and we did it simply by sharing teachers. They paid half-time, we paid half-time or whatever. And the teachers went back and forth. It turned out that the logistics of that arrangement were unmanageable, so we didn't persist in it.
It's a compelling reason to continue negotiations unless we have a particular goal in mind, and I'm, I'm not hearing one emerge. There are possibilities, but they're fairly vague and it just seems like making work. I mean, is that what you're feeling coming out of it?
I think, you know, if it were easier, it would be some, you know, great opportunities. Maybe you could finally do Lynn's robotics program or so. I mean, you, with two schools, you'd have bigger opportunities. I mean, there's a lot more opportunities available to kids at Williston because they have more kids. But I think it would require a lot of work and, you know, some real driving force on the board to sort of push things along. So I guess we can see if Heinsberg comes back to us with, you know, something concrete and a real push to go forward. And otherwise, we can just sort of.
This is on their agenda tonight also.
Okay, so let's, I guess we can wait and see what Heinsberg, maybe they have some great ideas, that'd be great. All right. Six point three biomass, we had a requ, or an offer from Chris Flynn to do a biomass evaluation.
Evaluation free charge.
So I guess we should just let them know whether or not we are interested in moving forward with that. As I said to someone, I imagine it's not just he comes and it's, does a walk-around. I imagine it might require some participation by Greg or Dave. So I'm not mindful of that, that even a free evaluation might be kind of inconvenient.
What is a biomass evaluation?
Okay, so his idea, he works for a company or he has a company that talks about essentially retrofitting, I hope I'm presenting, representing this correctly, just talks about retrofitting fuel systems to draw on biomass. It can be like wood biomass or it can be grass biomass. So, you know, and then you build into a fairly long-term contract, some assumptions about what our fuel oil costs will be over time and what the cost of this kind of contract would be, and you do a comparison.
What were the two types of biomass, wood or?
There's fuel, like pellets, wood, there's wood, wood biomass and grass biomass, which would be harvested locally. Then he got into some details about how Asia's buying up our wood pellets, so the costs of them are going up. It copied on me pretty quick, but that's the basic idea.
Is there a cost for the evaluation?
No, the evaluation is free. As Kristen said, it probably would require us to provide some numbers, although he sounded like he already had quite a few numbers, just, I don't know how.
And he's a CCS graduate, right?
No, I think I said that in that letter.
That, that rings a bell, you could be right about that.
What's his name?
Chris Flynn, F-L-I-N-N.
Some of you may remember that we had, in the bond proposal initially for the renovations and whatnot, money for this. And we took a huge beating from the community when knowledgeable people pointed out how cost ineffective it was going to be. And so we took it out. And I don't really think things have changed for the better. I really don't think there's anything to be gained from having even a free evaluation.
Yeah, I think too, at the time, oil costs had been high, oil came down and wood pellet costs went up.
Yeah, and that's something, none of us is an expert on projected part of the future, so. So it would be hard to make a valuation other than to say that, you know, last time people did look at it, I didn't, I saw it that great. And I think a lot of, I can't speak to biomass, but a lot of the alternative energy schemes that are marketed, you know, the marketing got built in. The subsidies that he requires and the margin he wants to keep and the cost of financing equipment. And then just leaves you with a little bit of savings. And then you've got the liability of, you know, you have to deal with the stuff and when it breaks and when you have to decommission it. Might be a lot of, a lot of headache.
Do we know if this is happening around the district at all in other schools?
Ash in Northwest who said he'd work with and another place I can't remember.
So Bristol, Motley?
No, Virgin.
Oh, Virgin.
I think if we wanted to address the energy issue, we should do it comprehensively. If we really thought that was something we had to band it forward, it's okay, well, what are all the alternatives? You know, rather than just kind of randomly go down the biomass path and then.
Well, would it make sense for us just to let him know, you know, we appreciate his interest? We're awaiting, I mean, the facilities committee should have a report next month, which includes some energy stuff, is that right?
Most in the category of correcting inefficiencies, not reworking the fuel system.
Which is where most of the money is, the easy money is inefficiency.
Yeah, yeah, envelope.
So is there any strong desire to get this done or should we just?
I think if we looked at it a couple years ago, until we're ready to replace the, replace what's there, maybe let's just put in a code for the others.
Okay. I don't think I can touch them. All right, seven point O, action matter, seven point one approved, 2013, 2014 order work plan. Do I have a motion? Oh, do I have a motion to approve? Second?
Second. Discussion. I love the new format. I think it's very easy to.
Does anyone see anything that they want added or moved or any?
Summer school actually happened, excuse me, Clyde, I'm sorry. Summer school actually happened this evening in the principal's report.
All right, out of those in favor, so you can probably saying aye.
Aye.
For those. Seven point two, do I have a motion to approve budget assumptions and budget calendar? Is there a second? Discussion?
Well, this is where we need to talk about. I don't think we want to use it for your chat room.
That should be executive session, yeah. That should be executive session.
Do that. Do that at the end of the meeting, but if there are other things.
Going back to food service, you made it sound as though there's a law here that I'm not familiar with. You can incorporate it, if you incorporate it into the budget, are you restricted without the overruns? What were you talking about?
No, I'm, I just, I'm parroting back what I've heard before, that you're allowed to run a deficit on food service, right? So that's why we just sort of always left it hanging out there. But you can't run a deficit in your general budget.
No, and you're not thinking about putting food service in your general budget, are you?
Yes.
Oh, you are?
No, a subsidy.
I thought you were thinking about putting.
Yeah, a subsidy.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Whether or not to do.
From, right.
Right.
So it always sits outside as an enterprise program and, but you can take money from your budget and say.
Make a contribution.
Most of the schools do do that. They put some level of subsidy so that they don't just keep in the big hole.
So the question is, do we add that now to these?
Well, is there an overrun issue?
About forty?
Well, no, just for this year, it was just nineteen right there, and the forty number was a buildup over.
So it would be like, I mean, okay. So when we, I mean, if we wanted to, to build in a subsidy into the baseline, it can be the amount we think, you know, traditionally we go eighteen over twenty. Or it could be any amount. You could put in a five thousand dollar subsidy.
Well, I, talking at the time at the retreat, I think the thought process was, I think Eric, we made this point, it's just being honest. This is what it costs and just running a deficit all the time isn't anybody's benefit. You know, it sounds like the number has been somewhere between eighteen and twenty for the past three or four years as a deficit. So I, and I thought running every single year and just building up the background.
And then, yeah, the taxpayers pay for it, so if it's in the budget, then they can see how they're paying for it.
Well, this is certainly one of those, if you build it, you will come deals. I mean, if they know the money's there, there's going to be a strong incentive to not necessarily overspend, but to be kind of relaxed about things.
Or, or could it?
My feelings are split on this subject.
Could it also potentially just be on the side of the coin where the guy knows exactly, or the woman knows exactly what the expectations are? As opposed to just spending across your fingers and hoping, I mean, if she had some, you know, if you set a target and we're going to, you know, seventeen Z or fifteen or twenty, whatever the number is you pick or twenty, and then communicate that that's a real number. I don't know, I mean, maybe.
Part of it.
The problem is enforcement.
Yeah.
They're going to spend what they spend. I mean, the thing that's happened so far this year is a discussion about how are we going to make the food service more efficient, cost efficient? And what that says is we've kind of given up on that concept and we're just saying, oh, well, they're going to overrun every year, so we'll just plan on it.
I think that there is a committee at the SU that's been meeting with Bob to look at that really seriously. Because you're not the only board that struggles with this, so that's one piece. I think we're never going to just say, oh, whatever, because I think we really, the principals here absolutely realize that the money you're spending on that, you are not spending on programming. So, so it's not like it doesn't matter to us. It really does matter. The other piece about it that makes it really tricky with food service is that how expensive it is has a lot to do with how many kids buy the service. And you don't control that. And so you could say, here is the number. But when we say at some point, okay, kids, we're not feeding you anymore because not enough of you bought the service for the first seven months and now we're out of money. It really does get tricky, but there is a committee.
Yeah, I'm on the committee.
You just met this week, didn't you?
So, yes, I was there, but I read the minutes, but yeah. So we have been going, I don't want to do a whole report here, but we have been talking a lot about this issue. And I think, you know, our, in our town, I think the history of this is that, and even in the language we're using, is that if, if the food service budget doesn't break even, we consider that a deficit. Where it's pretty standard practice for general funds to contribute to the food service. It's not universal. It's not in every school, but it is pretty standard practice for general funds of schools to contribute something to the food service operation. And so the fact that our, our, we have not done that with our general fund creates, I think, a mentality that, you know, our food service budget is always running at a deficit. There's something wrong with it. There's a leak somewhere. We got to plug the leak. And I, I just don't think that's true. I think it's the, the fact that we don't make that contribution creates that picture. And I, I just don't think that's how most, you know, the vast majority of schools have a regular line item contribution to their food service. And I think that's what we should do.
That was your line item contribution to food service. Doesn't mean that there are not cost overruns. It just means you are more or less disguising the fact that there are. I think the reality of food service, particularly in a school with how many students, four hundred and?
Fifty.
Fifty? It's going to almost always be a one-ease, and I think we just have to acknowledge that because there are so many factors that enter into what people eat, sell, eat, and what they buy and what they don't buy. I mean, it's just, it's, it's by nature inefficient. That doesn't bother me so much as acknowledging the reality. You're not failing to acknowledge the reality. So as I listen to your folks speak, I come down on the side, but not making a line item. I'm just discussing it every year and saying, this is what happened. I think our cost overruns blossomed when management of the system went to the central office. Losing battle for me to suggest that we take it back, but it went from the ones or twos and five thousand up to where it is now. It's kind of ironic that there's a CSSU committee to discuss the issue. But this is not, this doesn't mean that I'm not concerned with the budget or with the amount of money that people have to put up. But to me, it's simple and straightforward. There's going to be an overrun. Maybe it's going to be five thousand, maybe it's going to be fifteen. There has always been an overrun, and I just don't think we should lose a lot of sleep over it. But on the other hand, we need to call it what it is and it's more visible to do not make a line item contribution. Because there is at the back of that, the incentive to be more relaxed about things. And as far as the financial side of it is concerned, we don't want them to be relaxed about it.
I don't think they're relaxed. I, I think that probably the new, the federal rules about what you can and cannot serve have huge impact. And our, and decisions in boards before this current board about whether or not we offer à la carte items that aren't healthy to kids. And, you know, previous boards have said no, and I don't even know if you can do that in a K eight.
Actually, you can't do it anymore.
So there's all this, you know, CBU, you can sell chips, you're not, you know, so there's not a big moneymaker. So I think to say the problem exacerbated when it went upstairs, I think the problems are across the country because kids don't want to eat squash soup at lunch. They'd rather have tater tots, so.
Well, to Clyde, to Clyde's point, and I understand your point, Clyde, my reservation is this, that if you just hold off discussing it till the end of the year, you're, it's not hidden from us here, but it's hidden from the budget process, which is where the public gets to see what's going on.
Right.
And that's, I think that's the bigger picture.
We're going to hide a lot more money in the budget for negotiations than we're talking about the cost of a run.
Well, this is one, one place where we have a little bit.
There's a level of disingenuous about that approach to things.
All right, well, maybe we can, do we want to decide tonight if we want to add this or not into the baseline? Is there a will to, to put money in or to not put money in rather than revisit it?
I think you can decide tonight based on what I've heard. I think, I'll disagree, but I think you can make the decision as a board.
Okay.
Do we need to decide an amount tonight or just that we're going to have a line in?
It has to be a defective decision, is it not an action item?
Yeah, I mean, I think if we, if we let Bob know a number, it's getting him further along in the budget. We can say we're going to add an item in.
Sometimes.
Right, we're not, we're not finishing that line item. We're just putting a placeholder there to create this one. So I think, I, I think we should put, I think we should put fifteen thousand dollars, ask him to use that as a number in the baseline.
All right, so if we could let Bob know, we'll use that. All right, other items on the baseline. And I think Eric raised a number of questions about the, at the CSSU meeting asked a number of questions about why it was certain percentages. I think maybe we'll get some additional information from Bob, who could not be here.
So do we need, I guess that's not clear, do we need to, as our own board, agree, disagree, or do we not have any power over what the CSSU numbers are? Are these ones that filter down into our budget?
This is, this is our assumptions for our budget, so we can say no.
But ours are the same, right?
It's the same.
It's the same.
It's the same across.
And some things don't apply to us.
Again, the same way I did at CSS.
So, yeah, the transportation one that's separate doesn't apply to us. So number eight, number nine, number ten. Number four has been. Do we need to table that ourselves, number four?
Or do we need to discuss that so we have an opinion next time CSSU board meets?
Yeah, yeah, we should. All right, so. Health, dental, we're relying on Bob having surveyed what our likely costs are for health and dental. Number four, daily subs for Mark and Clyde, if you weren't there. The administrators across the SU and Cindy, I guess, are looking for an increase in the compensation for substitute teachers. The request is that, starting in October, it go from eighty to eighty-five dollars and that.
That was tabled.
And that was tabled. And then they're looking for an increase to ninety dollars for the next fiscal year. The reasoning was that especially during big professional development days where a lot of teachers are out of buildings, it's hard, it's becoming harder for some districts to compete with more generous nearby districts when trying to get good substitute teachers.
And I'm sorry, who is looking for this? You said they're looking for?
Uh, the principals, and I don't know how our specific principals have weighed in on this, but when the administrators meet as a group, they've indicated that they want an increase in the pay to substitute teachers.
Well, let's keep in mind that we're talking about Charlotte, not Heinsburg or Williston or wherever.
Right, right.
So.
So, so here's the deal, that we, apparently Charlotte and Shelburne don't really have any problem.
Well, we don't have, do we have a problem?
What is the?
Finding substitute teachers.
Sure, we, sometimes we do.
Yeah, I would support, I, I work closely with Naomi in getting subs and she's shared, even this year, we lost a lot of subs. And there are some people that will, this is an example, will call in and reserve them for working here and then we'll get a call like two weeks later because they've been reserved that day and they're not going to show up because they could go in Burlington and get paid a hundred and five. So we're losing subs because the pay isn't equitable with surrounding towns. And we've noticed a difference this year when you look at the sub list from last year and she shared it with me and said, look, we've lost these subs and not coming back for several reasons, but also because our pay isn't as high as the surrounding towns. So I would say we'd want to support that. Greg, I don't know if you feel.
Yeah, no, we had talked about it, yeah.
Yeah.
So there is discussion, CSSU, the information that we were provided looked as if most districts were roughly comparable to ours. The indications were that it was a lesser problem in Charlotte and Shelburne. And it was mainly an issue around certain high demand times of year. So most of the time you can find someone, but when everybody's in for someone, then it's when it gets tricky.
But the, I guess the other thing, I'm thinking about it when, since Audrey said that, so if you have a list and you have, you know, certain substitutes that you want to come in and teach on those days because you know they're going to actually instruct the kids well. And that's different than just having a huge list with people who will come in and, you know, just be an adult in the room. So.
Have you ever had occasions where you've simply not yet a substitute?
In, in instances where there's a lot of people, yes, we have had that. I'd say maybe a handful of times, and we're shifting people around to cover classrooms. And we're shifting people around to cover classrooms.
So it sounded to me like, and, and we didn't get too deep into what the logistics were, but basically, whether it's a particular individual you want, a particular seasonal demand, whatever the case would be, where you'd want to, in one instance, pay more, or, you know, if you paid more, you'd have someone, but the other, eight out of ten times, you don't need to pay more, there's no ability to exercise any discretion in pricing, right, so you have to have one price online, you have to be the same price as everybody else in the district.
I think that's too complicated.
I also think there's, you know, you're gonna have over time, people dribbling out of your system, because I made, I made ninety on Tuesday, and, you know, there's two more minutes of a drive, and then, you know, a couple, you lose a couple every year, and your list gets shorter and shorter. I think you're gonna lose your more qual, you know, your higher quality people who are gonna get, go and get more pay.
And that's what we're seeing, in some cases.
And is that, just, I don't wanna beat this one to death, but is that, because we do pay very well for longer term subs, right?
If they're certified teachers.
Certified teachers, like for actual quality, if you want. Somebody who's good, and you really want, and it's important, it's a long term thing. For just like, something came up, need somebody to play like a video to the Spanish class. I don't know, I just kinda feel like maybe, I don't know how much flexibility we can have, but to me, this sounds like something that could be solved with directing resources to where you really wanna get the best results, but maybe we just can't do that.
We always want the best possible individual in front of the kids. Teachers leave lesson plans that they expect to be carried out, and most of the time when the lessons, when the absences are planned especially, they expect a day of instruction as close to what they would have given as possible. When they're out sick, they have those plans in the drawer that are a little more generic, but we want the best people in front of the kids.
Right, if you, if you have a sub, or if you expect that the subs are not gonna be very skilled, then you do get a lot of videos. But that's not what we want.
No.
But then, coming up with a number, even if, well, what was the number, we were given a number of what the budgetary implications are of making this move.
Like ten, or eleven, I can't remember, a hundred and three to down to ten.
Adding five dollars was eleven on the annual budget?
Yeah, that was next year's number, right?
She said seven percent. But I, I don't know what the seven percent is based on.
Well, is ninety dollars seven percent more than?
Yeah, but I don't know what the original number was, so I don't know what the seven percent is.
And, and that gets complicated, because we have gone through two or three years now where we've been doing a lot of professional development with our best practices math, and that is ending. So, you know, I was listening to those numbers thinking, that's a reflection of the professional development work we've been doing with every single math teacher, K through L. It's not gonna keep looking like that once we're...
Although Charlotte, we're further...
Yeah, we're further. We have two, we have two more years left, this year and next year, where we're doing that studio work.
Built some of that money into the budget.
About the work of every teacher being out for...
We did, we did, we did build that in, but not the amount that we're...
It's an extra dollar thirty an hour over two years, so it's seventy cents, a raise of seventy cents an hour over, per year for two years. I understand it's a ten thousand dollar expenditure on a yearly basis, but if you're getting better, if what you're telling me is we're getting better quality subs on a more consistent basis for an extra ten dollars a day, I think I'd be okay.
How much did you say they paid in?
I believe, I can't remember, I think she said they paid a hundred or a hundred. It's not there.
It's in the CSSU packet, here.
Burlington, I think Burlington was the one that was a hundred, or it could have been a hundred and five.
Colchester is a hundred and ten. Even the first one is misleading, because you look up there and you see eighty, but then if you look at the little stars, it's like ninety-five or a hundred, and I know what these, you know, complete intro teaching training is a video, but everybody watches, and then they get to ninety-five a day.
That's what the license, I thought that meant a teaching license.
No. Unlicensed subs who complete the intro teacher training, so that's a, a training that they have developed in-house to say, if you're going to sub in our system, you, and you complete this little training, so don't talk about the kids.
You get fifteen dollars a day more.
So, here's, the other thing for us to think about is that, it's policy now that we have to have the same sub rate throughout the SU. So unless we affect a policy change, if the other schools agree to a ninety dollar rate, that's what we have. So I don't know if, at least for the baseline budget, it makes sense to put that in there for now, and then we can always back out of it as the numbers, you know, go through the permutations over the next few months. So I just throw that, I don't know how much more we wanna talk about that, since we do have limited control over the actual number.
Wait a minute. We have complete control over it. There is a law, statute about this. The substitute teacher rate of pay, please, are not gonna show up and close the building if we decide not to pay the same rate as the rest of CSSU. This whole thing about staying in lockstep with CSSU is getting extremely expensive and counterproductive. On a day when someone has offered a hundred and ten or a hundred and five to go to Burlington, and they're only offered eighty-five or eighty, whatever it is, to go to Charlotte, they're gonna go to Burlington, unless there's something probably wrong with them. The real question here is the frequency of intersection of those two strands, so you know, in my heart, I don't really mind paying them an extra five dollars a day. In my heart, I mind very much doing something because that's what CSSU is doing. Keeping up with the Joneses in one form or another. The central question here is, the one that I ask you, how often can you not get substitutes, and how often can you only get substitutes that you feel to be of inferior quality?
As I said Clyde, it may be a handful, maybe, maybe three or four times a year where we're, we're struggling because there's a lot of people out because of sickness, or because we have the best practices, studio work, so we have teachers already having subs for that work, and we may have trouble getting a sub. I'm not saying that they're not of high quality, it's just we're struggling with that. If we have a sub that's not working well, we just may not call them back, so I would say maybe three to four times in a year, we struggle with that. But to start off the year knowing that we had more subs last than we did this year, the list was a lot diminished than we had last year, which could be for several reasons, but...
I, I think the other thing that you need to think about, and I understand, you know, your feeling about that it's across the SU, but on, in the day that, everybody else goes to ninety and you stay at eighty, when the world knows that, they're all gonna go there because on any given day, they all, this is a big school system, on any given day, they can get a sub just in this house. They don't have to stay in Charlotte, and if they feel like, you know, that their value, their worth, their work isn't valued as much, they're not gonna, they're not gonna put their name on the list there, they're gonna wait to get the call at Heinsberg, or Shelburne, or Williston, or CBU. And then I think about being a principal, or being the person who's calling the subs, and thinking that you've got your day set up, you've got your subs, and now they get the call, the sub gets the call at the last minute, and they can get fifteen more dollars someplace else, and they call and say, "Sorry, I'm canceling, I'm not gonna be there," and there's really, we don't have contracts with these people.
All right, there's no recourse.
You know, so I just think that, you know, when you think about like running your school system smoothly and not doing the video in the Spanish class, really having somebody in who's gonna engage the students, and they're going to learn.
Well, the Spanish teacher uses videos in the Spanish class. But as I said, in my heart, I don't really have a problem with paying them an extra five dollars. The following year, there are other issues that come to bear. If the regional superintendents are so ill advised as to adopt this new school calendar, and it's gonna become a very real question about when professional development days should occur, should they occur during school days or in the intervals in between, and the same with student-teacher, parent-teacher meetings and reports about the kids. So, I don't really mind if you raise it five dollars for this year.
It would be ten.
Ten?
It would be ten.
I would hold off on doing anything about it for the following year, until we know how things are going to work.
And just so you know, I don't know if you were there to hear the conversation at the SU board meeting, but other boards are gonna be having exactly the same conversation you are, more than just the Charlotte board members who are asking questions about this and wondering whether they're particular schools, so I just think that it makes sense, as a group, that you can have the same rate, but I'm not saying that I think it's necessarily gonna go up.
Well, and we're all, so we're all simultaneously having this conversation, and we're all gonna come out in a different place, and then next month, we find out what everyone...
Well, I think it was tabled, so this is discussion?
It was tabled for this year's budget.
Eighty-five for this year's.
But not the budget assumptions.
Oh, for the budget assumptions, well, the budget assumptions, again, that's just an assumption.
Right, it's just an assumption, I'd like to suggest that we make our budget assumption, I'm gonna assume, I'm gonna guess.
You're gonna assume on the assumption?
That in the end, we're gonna come out not raising this money for this year, and next year, we go to eighty-five. That's what I'm gonna guess, where the boards are gonna come out, so that, I would like to suggest that we change our budget assumption right now to eighty-five, and then we'll see next month where everyone came out. Anyone else? I know. Eric, Mark? I don't have a strong feeling about it, it's just a guess, but how does it gonna work?
Well, yeah, I mean, again, I suppose you always change your budget, but it sounded like the different schools are kinda split on whether they wanted to pursue that raise. I, I'd, I'd agree, we wouldn't wanna necessarily be different from everybody else, but it wasn't clear to me that everybody else is gonna come out on the side of a raise.
Right. All right, so should we ask them to put it in at eighty-five for now, and? Are there any other items on here that we want adjusted, other than trying to get some better information about the percentages?
Could you see, like, random numbers and very high numbers, like, I, I struggle with when that all gets spat into the number, system, and a number comes out, it's gonna be like a gargantuan number. If everything's up five or fifteen percent, I mean, do we, we can't pass a budget that's up ten percent again this year.
No, no we can't. But, I mean, you have some, there's a lot of things you don't have any control over. And I feel like a lot of this, the, the fine tuning of the numbers isn't until December, where then you get a change that's, you know, this is coming in less, this is coming in more, but I don't know how much further refinement they can do until you find out from the state that this is gonna be this, or from the healthcare that it's gonna be that rate. Usually it's not till mid-December, is that right, Brian?
Some of the numbers we don't find out through January, but I mean, Eric brought up the point at the SU meeting about the fuel, oil, diesel, woodchips, and electricity, and pointed out that the Department of Energy fuel prices are predicted to be level, right?
Yeah. But just like, it didn't seem like, I don't know how much thought they put into those numbers.
Yeah, so then that's the con, that's the conversation that I'll have, and say, okay, so if that's so, then why are ours up this much, and what does that mean? And maybe it's risk management, I mean, I don't know, I don't know that even the Department of Energy knows.
Well, nobody knows, right?
I was listening to a guy on, in VPR saying, you know, they said, would you pre-buy, he goes, oh, I'm not gonna go there, and this was the guy, you know, who owns the fuel company. Who knows?
But I mean, if that were the discussion, if somebody said, hey, you know, we decided we're gonna pre-buy, and we've negotiated with Passion Fuels, and it was four point one percent, at least I'd know where the number came from, but if they just kinda shrug and go, eh, you know, five percent here, ten percent there, it seems like a haphazard way to start the process.
Before most of you were on the board, I used to object to having this discussion about budget assumptions for that very reason. They're assumptions, and as somebody just pointed out, you don't get the real information until God knows when, some of it, not until after we've passed the budget in March, so it's fun to talk about, but I wouldn't lose a lot of sleep about this, as long as we all understand that you're not locked in to anything that's in this list of assumptions.
That's really the key point. Okay, I move to accept it as we've amended it.
Do I have to be more specific on that?
I've got the no, I did assumption for subs at eighty-five.
Sorry.
All right, I'll go some... I'm sorry, I'm gonna... You wanna lump this with the budget calendar? Yeah, I think, well, I think we had a motion already to accept, so let's also look at the calendar before we go. We can pull it out, it's something a lot of, and guess I'm...
The only problem with the calendar that I saw is the January fourteenth date is double booked for the CSD budget and negotiations. And given what's going on at this time of year with budgeting, it's probably negotiations that's gonna get more. Because there are deadlines around approval of articles and getting them to the town clerks by a certain date.
So my question is earlier, October twenty-fourth, do we have any wiggle room with that? My son's birthday's on the twenty-sixth.
So this is, you have, you have a hundred percent wiggle room on that?
Okay, so for me, I don't know how it works for us, but the twenty-fourth is really gonna be a super stressful day, and I will...
So this is CSD forum, that's up to you.
If we wanna do it.
That's a conversation to have, do you wanna have a forum, if you do want, wanna have a forum, when might you wanna have it? Okay, that's totally up to you.
All right, so do we wanna have a, a budget forum? We've done this in the past, Joe, how many people come?
Joe comes.
Joe comes.
A hundred percent of the people here come.
Yeah.
Every time.
Very much appreciated.
I mean, in theory, they're always, it seems like such a good idea, if people wanna know, the earlier they get involved, the earlier you can get them information, you can get input. We haven't had a lot of success in drawing people to them, because really, it's some, either you think the budget's too high, or cutting kindergarten, or it's, it's something that's, something is getting people worked up to bring up typically. Unless people have other ideas of what we can do to bring people to a forum, I don't know if we think there's value yet. At least having one, so we can say we have one. Can we just extend our first budget meeting a half an hour earlier and call it a forum?
Of course.
Which would be November nineteenth. Instead of meeting at six-thirty, we meet at six, we say, our meeting is preceded by a budget forum. And then it becomes audience and communications, just a longer time for that. And if no one's there, you can just go and do it. Well, probably not till the warrant time, right, but it's kinda how you want it to be.
But you definitely can do that, if that's...
I think that's a good idea. I think the real question is whether Joe was gonna say anything for that fella.
We give Joe a half hour. Erica Mark, what do you think? I mean, we'll get people on our budget nights, we just, they just don't come on the budget forum night, they come during the meeting.
Audrey and I have a lot of controversial ideas in the works, so.
So good, we're gonna have a juicy budget year.
We really work on this stuff.
We're gonna have to buy kindergarten eighth grade classes. Yeah, we love our viewer ratings. Yeah, all right, so I guess so far we have amended our calendar to delete October twenty-fourth, to add an earlier start time on the nineteenth, to include a budget forum. And I guess, too, looking ahead to the next...
And I guess too, looking ahead to the next, I don't, it's too bad we don't know when the deadlines are for, you know, we'll have to figure out all the deadlines for the news because I'm assuming we're going to be wanting to get out information, not every other issue, probably every issue about budget information that might be of interest to voters. Is there anything else on the calendar that people have questions about or are concerned about?
Elaine? We have on the exec, on the executive session, legal issues. My understanding is that was coming, going to come from Elaine?
It was her, that was what she titled it, but...
But you have, you have answers.
Kind of.
If you need me, text me.
Yeah, yeah, okay. She's not leaving, she's voting for the meeting. Are there other questions on the calendar? All right, is there a need to separate them out for the vote, budget assumptions? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven point three, approve entering VHI member participation agreement and power of attorney. Do you have a motion?
Uh, yes.
And a second? So, can you expand this? Yeah, in order, it has to do with the, the new healthcare reform stuff and in order to have someone on the board, we have to agree to this. So, we are in VHI.
We don't have much choice.
Yeah, we're in VHI anyway, but if we want to be able to have some Chittin South people represented on the VHI board, you have to agree to this now. Otherwise, you automatically become part of it, but you just don't have the voice on that board, so...
So, you're, what you're saying is whoever gets approved as the rep is going to have power of attorney? Is that what this is?
I think that that is going to move to appoint the VHI, the VHI as power of attorney is outlined in the power of attorney.
And how many reps from CSSU are there going to be just longer?
Well, I think it's the administrators. Oh, it's too bad Elaine just left.
I think it's, I think it's Cindy, Bob and Mike.
Oh, Jesus.
Oh, and authorize the board chair. The administration recommends the board take the following actions. Move to approve the VHI health and dental membership agreements as presented and authorize the board chair to sign said agreements on behalf of the board.
Yeah.
And, pull it to, move to appoint the VHI as power of attorney as outlined in the power of attorney, VHI medical benefits and the power of attorney to VHI dental benefits and authorize us the board chair to sign said power of attorney on behalf of the board. Oh, it's not the same, let's see what it says. All right, in order, I know I, there's two. In order to put forth a representative from your district to serve on the initial VHI board, the updated member participation, it's not, I'm not sure if Charlotte is their own or if it's one or if it's just Colleen. And I don't think there's an actual, oh, here's the power of attorney. The Charlotte School District appoints VHI with full power and authority to obtain any and all information, reports or data relating to the participation of member in the VHI medical benefits program, including but not limited to any and all claims, information related data, to do any and all acts without qualification necessary or convenient to effectuate members' participation in the program and to enable and effectuate the performance by member and VHI of the terms and conditions of a certain agreement to participate in the program. So, that's the power of attorney that we are giving to VHI. So, they can obtain the information that they need to be able to provide us with health insurance.
Did someone make a motion already?
Yes.
Yes. Any other questions concerned? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, consent agenda, eight point oh, is there any need to pull anything out of the consent agenda? That motion to approve the consent agenda?
Someone?
Second? Is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Nine point oh, director's comments.
I have two. We should be having our board meetings in Charlotte and negotiations should be held in public without hair splitting or refinements. Any activities, meetings associated with negotiations should be in public.
Okay.
I would, I would agree with the second part, right?
Sure.
Comment, listen to me.
I just think the school's off to a spectacular start. It's great. I do too. This building looks great. The parking lot looks great. And although I cannot go, there is the back-to-school barbecue on the twenty-sixth, so if any board members are around, I think it's hot luck, but you can look at the school just later. I'm sure it'll be a great time. All right, confirm next meeting dates. Board chair's is the seventeenth. The policy committee has been changed. If anyone wants to do policy, let me know. And if not, I will continue to do it at least for a while. Our next, the next CSSU board meeting is October ninth at five, followed by our meeting here at seven P.M. Do I have a motion to go into executive session? And my understanding, Greg and Audrey, is that you're not going to be there for negotiations. I'm wondering if they should be there for legal.
I think they should.
I do too.
Okay, so we start with that.
Sure.
Okay, so we'll start with executive sessions for legal, it should be a few minutes. And then we will do negotiations. Thank you, Joe.